Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Excellent.
Seems like we just did this.
It's the time of year, you know?
I guess it is.
Yeah. We're gonna do it again next week, too.
There you go. You'll try to still we get it right, by gosh.
What's that, John?
I said I equated the tax time, never fun. Can you hear me okay?
You're a little muddy. It's a little lo-fi. You know, it works. I think you're audible and clear, and it's not like you're glitching or hanging up or anything, so I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, the Apple earbuds, I don't think work so well with Windows operating system on a laptop.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, they're in constant turmoil, I think.
They're personally incensed. Yeah, no, I could see that.
Just got out of a library advisory board meeting.
How was that?
Oh, that's really exciting.
Is Barbara McKenzie still involved in that?
She is. She's a liaison from the Friends of the Library. So she's, and then she's on the county commission. So she's not on the local LAB.
John, do you know if they're still, uh, are they distributing hotspots and that sort of thing for people?
If they're still doing what?
Uh, like renting or checking out hotspots, like cellular hotspots for people to be able to get on the internet.
As far as I know, they are. I haven't heard that they're not anymore.
Yeah.
And I have an owl flying around my backyard tonight.
That's exciting.
He's a good-sized one. I think he's a great horn. I think I saw him about a week or two ago during the day. There was a mob of crows harassing him, and I scared the crows away, but I don't think he was that worried about them. I couldn't get to him where he was sitting. Now he's, looks like he's sitting here, uh, getting ready for the light to go away and then begin his dinnertime.
Wow, what a nice view out your window. That's really cool.
It's not bad. But you know what's fun about him, Laura? I've never really got to see him up and close until, actually, just this year. But over the years, we hear them quite often at night. Hear one or two of them talking, hooting at each other. It's, uh, kinda nice.
That's very cool. Saw a Cooper's hawk in our backyard a few weeks ago, having a staring contest with a squirrel. I think it wanted to eat the squirrel. Got away.
Did the squirrel look concerned at all?
It looked very concerned, and its tail was twitching agitatedly.
At least, we have them here, too. We see them do their squirrel thing, but they're actually, you know, sometimes we'll walk by a window and they're out in the deck, and they'll look at us and give us hell for existing in the house. They don't like us walking by and annoying us. It's like, really?
It's their yard. What are you doing there?
Hey, they're good opportunists. They, we feed the bird, all the birds that come by in the morning, the peacocks and stuff, and as soon as the peacocks are gone, they're around. What's left? Yeah, this would be talk that, uh, John Delasa would love. All right, let's see, who do we have here? How are we doing? Hello, Vice Mayor Harvey. Let's see.
Good evening, Mayor.
See, am I missing? Who else? And there's Mr. Forg. All right.
Susan, you don't have your Disney ears on.
I know. But boy, did I get a lot of steps in. Oh, my goodness.
You had the park hopper, right? You're going back and forth between the two parks.
We were, yeah. We were. And I went on rides that I didn't think I'd ever go on. But they talked me into it.
Yeah. How did it feel? Okay?
It was okay, yeah.
Good for you.
I just can't go on the cup ride. That makes me sick every time.
Oh, no, we didn't do that one. But we did do Space Mountain, and we did do the, uh, Galaxy one, the one where you go up and down. I didn't think I could go on that one, but it, it was okay.
The most terrifying ride for me was the Goofy's Flying School. It was awful.
I went on that, I went on that three times in a row because there was no line. I didn't like it.
No, there's no line. I mean, I just, I just think of like it's this roller coaster that makes these really sharp abrupt turns like you can't, right? Like you can't fly. And it just makes me think about the metal fatigue on that, and it's gonna break off the rails and...
There's that engineer thinking. But you guys always design with much more above, though, than... You calculated to breaking and then add a significant extra, don't you?
I hope so. I hope so.
I was expecting a more definite answer, but okay.
Normally you would, you know, but, you know.
I'm more worried about flying out. Is what's holding me gonna hold?
Well, with that, since we've all lived through the terrors of Disneyland recently and in the past, let's move to our opening meeting. It's 6:01. Are we ready to go, Damian? All right, then we can go live. Uh, just give, are we, are we, are we live right now?
Yes, we are.
Very good. Well, good evening, everybody who's attending. I'd like to welcome you to this joint meeting of the Katari City Council and this accessory agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agency. This Tuesday, February 15th, for our regular strategic, excuse me, our special strategic planning meeting. This is indeed a strategic planning meeting, so we will begin. I will ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Laman.
Here. All right, and just before we go to public comment, I'm gonna ask our city manager if he would take a moment and introduce the staff who are present here tonight to the public.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Laman. Um, councilmembers, so tonight, um, we have, oh, there we go. We have Director of Admin Services Angela Quarter, Director of Community Development Noah House, Police Chief Michael Parrish, and Director of Public Work, Student Engineer Craig Scott, and of course, Lauren Burgess, our city clerk. And, um, in the meeting, we're gonna be keeping the video off because we've been having some shaky, uh, video speeds here recently, so it helps with the jerkiness of the meeting.
Very good. Well, we all have to do that from time to time, so it's not unusual in this world of Zoom that we now live in. All right, so with that, we're called a meeting to order. We'll move now to item number two, which is public comments. And I'd like to read that pursuant to California Government Code section 54954.3A, members of the public wishing to address the council may do so at the beginning of the special meeting, and such comments will be limited to the special meeting topic, which of course is strategic planning for fiscal year 2223. Uh, I am also open to reopen this later, perhaps during proposed projects, if needed or requested, as we have historically done at these meetings. So with that, I'm gonna ask our clerk if we have any public comment to start the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Laman. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're using your telephone, dial star nine. Mayor Laman, that will end public comment.
Very good. Thank you for that. Well, this brings us then to our study session. And as mentioned, this is a study session, strategic planning for the upcoming fiscal year 2022-2023. Uh, I will mention that this is a study session, and no action will be taken by the city council tonight. And with that, I will hand it over to staff to begin.
You, Mayor, members of the council, Lauren, could you release this screen, please? All right, well, um, let me, uh, let me just start with, um, a little bit of overview. So we're gonna be, um, uh, we launch right into the goals and objectives, and then, um, we can talk a little bit about the accomplishments that either we've completed this year or we expect to complete by the end of the fiscal year. And then, um, and then finally talk about, um, proposed projects for next year. And, um, I think at each one of those, each one of those segments, we'll, I'll stop and, you know, then we can have a conversation about it. And, um, and Mayor, if you wish, that would be, you know, maybe a good time to have comment if, if that's appropriate. Um, so first of all, I will start with, um, I'll start with the goals and objectives, and, um, in the packet, you'll see that the goals and objectives are largely the same as they were last year, so, um, it's, uh, the first goal is unchanged, ensuring long-term vitality for the city. Um, the second goal is slightly changed, so, um, it previously said provide core services consistent with standard community service levels. The proposed edit there is provide core services consistent with best-in-class community service levels. And then, um, the third goal is, um, just previously, community engagement, but it's been proposed to modify that to say promote community engagement, to inform and encourage participation. And then finally, the last goal, um, is promote an equitable, compassionate, and healthy community that honors, that honors diversity as a source of strength, and there's no, um, changes proposed for that goal. Aside from that, there's just some minor, um, text changes underneath each one of those goals, but, um, I'd be happy to, uh, to talk about any of those proposed edits, or if there's other proposed edits the council wishes to make or discuss.
Well, that's a perfect time to check in with the council and see if anybody has any questions or comments regarding our goals and the, the edits that have been put forward this year. I'm not seeing any hands going up on the participant list.
Sorry, I was slow. It's Councilmember Ford.
Well, I think we can let that go. This is a special meeting, so it's all good, Ben. You have the floor. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, my only thought is, um, that Objective 1F, to my mind, deserves either this year or next to be elevated to a top-level goal. Um, the, the news about climate change and, and the rapid, uh, acceleration of climate effects, to me, warrant, uh, raising the profile of our climate change efforts to a top-level goal. It, it's not, this is not a question of vitality for the city. It's a question of survival, and I think that, um, so I don't have proposed wording for that, and I'm okay if we wait a year, but it, but that goal shows up, um, that objective shows up very little in the, the proposed, um, projects for the year. It, it does show up in a few places, but relatively few, and I think we need to start paying more attention to how the city addresses climate change.
All right, thank you for that. Let's see. I'm seeing Councilmember Sparks, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I, I would support that change, and also I would just like to add on that I think wildfire preparation would fit in really well with that goal, as it's a adaptive, we need to adapt to one of the major impacts of climate change, which is these recurring wildfires. Um, and I also noticed that there were very little in the, in, in terms of wildfire preparation in our projects for the year. Um, so I think elevating that to a top-level goal maybe would be helpful, putting that focus where it needs to be.
All right, any other comment from the council? The Vice Mayor, the outgoing there, not seeing anything right now. I had, uh, a question for staff, just a minor one, but I was curious. Two things on, one, C, uh, talks about an objective of Sultan Affordable Housing New Development, new infrastructure consistent with the visions and goals of the General Plan and EIR. I'm wondering if it fits someone there, the visions and goals of our community's values. Because that seems like the top-level thing that all these other things have sprung for, representing the views, the values of the community. Um, not insisted on, just wondering if it works in there somewhere. Uh, so wanted to suggest that. And I did want to ask, uh, and because I probably missed this discussion, so my apologies, but under Goal 3, uh, C, it mentions explore the possibility of incorporating neighborhood-level programming to city activities. Could you just briefly flesh that out for me, Mr. Obid, what that might look like or entail?
Yeah, so, um, it was relatively undefined last year when we incorporated this in, but, um, you know, one of the, you know, um, some of the things that we've been looking into is, um, you know, with the, uh, in terms of physical infrastructure, is You know, with the, uh, in terms of physical infrastructure is creating neighborhoods with entrances, um, you know, we have gateways and then the kind of minor. Well, like the next tier down from like the city entry, be like a neighborhood entry and kind of neighborhood identity. And then, um. And, you know, then I think there's things that can be, um, once you have a neighborhood identity like that, um, I mean, the neighborhood identity, I think, exists in many cases already. But, but formalizing it and then, and then leveraging that for, um. You know, outreach programmings, programming of various types, I think there's probably lots of opportunities there. If we start thinking at a neighborhood scale, you know.
I understand, and actually, we've talked about this before, my apologies. When I saw it here, I thought it was something in terms of encouraging, a new way of encouraging participation or participatory government, um, something like that, but I see what you're saying here, um. And I certainly support that. Does it fit in the community engagement area? Possibly, maybe it fits in other areas too, but at any rate, I do support that concept very strongly. I think that's a good way to build community in a community. I just in general, I do support Mr. Ford's suggestion. I do think that would be a good idea. I do agree that there should be a call out mentioned here somewhere also of the very aspects that we have to mitigate or try to mitigate and deal with that result from climate change and its effects, and that's probably where I think I would see preparation, response, the various things might relate to, for example, wildfires. I, I think it would probably fit there well, maybe, just a thought off the top of my head. Rather than a separate subheader, because I suspect there'll be a few different things like that. We'll also be looking for some areas, uh, lower-lying areas will be problems with water, certainly to the south of this, which may impact travel in this area, a lot of different things. So I do agree, though, with both my colleagues. I think this is something would be valuable to raise up and start making it a a litmus test for how we decide what things we need to move forward on. So with that, I'll check one more time. I'm not seeing any other hands. Anything else on this, Mr. Obid, that you wanted to bring forward before we move forward to various accomplishments from departments?
Uh, nothing other than, you know, um, I think it would be easy enough to make this change and kind of like we did last year, come back at our next study session with the proposed edits and then, um, and, you know, kind of incorporate and highlight the projects, I mean, the projects around climate change are in there, but they're not necessarily called out and highlighted, and so I think if we highlight it, if we elevate it as a goal, we can elevate the visibility of, of those elements that we're doing.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's just a great, difficult way to start thinking about it. It is hard for us, the city, to get a handle on some of those big problems, but at least as Mr. Ford put it, taking the time to actually focus on it might encourage us and allow us to do better with that. So with that, before we move on to start the conference, I'd like to take a short break. I see we have a few attendees. I'll ask if you have any public comment very briefly on the goals that were suggested. And I'll ask the city clerk if she could see if anybody would like to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. As a reminder to our attendees, please use your raise hand icon. If you're dialing in, dial star nine. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. Um, yes, I'd like to just support the suggestion to move Objective one F on the climate change, um, as a higher priority. We're in the climate crisis, and I think really everything should be looked at through that lens. Um, and it won't necessarily always, um. Align in a harmonious way with other objectives. I mean, there may be times when climate needs really take priority over other goals, so, um, but I think that's super important, and if everything could be seen through the climate lens, um, I would support that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
That will end public comment.
Very good. Thank you for that, Ms. Burgess. All right, so bring it back. We'll go back to our city manager and begin looking through our various departments' accomplishments for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I was actually going to propose that we just focus on some of the highlights. Obviously, we can, we can talk about any of the specific projects that are in the list.
I think everybody who's watching this that expected you to read through every single item on every single PowerPoint think will be pleased to hear you say that. That's my guess. I'm seeing smiles from some of my colleagues, so please proceed.
Yeah, I'm condensing it to one, one slide, basically. So, um, these are some of the, some of the, I guess, the higher-profile things that, um. We expect either are done already or will be done by the end of the fiscal year. And, um. And there's one thing, actually, just given that last comment, we should, uh, I forgot to put on here, but, you know, we do plan to be done with it by the end of fiscal year. So, um, and that is the, uh, the prohibition on gas station expansions, or new gas stations in Katari, so that that is planned for this fiscal year, as, as you all know, but it's not on the slide. We're currently working on the cannabis business ordinance update. Sort of the headliner here is the allowance for lounges associated with retail cannabis, and that'll be, um, that still hasn't come to the council, but it's going to be going to the Planning Commission in March and then to the council after that. The pension and infrastructure plan, that's complete, so, um. That was a heavy, um, heavy lift. I can tell you, you know, staff-wise internally, um, getting all that. Kind of getting the optimal mix of things worked out, but really to deal with the two biggest liabilities. And in the meantime, save, uh, save the city and ultimately save the residents a significant amount of money. And then, um, continued heavy investment in roads, so we had the, um, the maintenance project in the bird section near Myrtle, off of Myrtle, and the West Side project is the reconstruction project that's underway right now. So that just continues the multi-year effort and, um, both kind of keeping the plates spinning that are already up, maintaining the roads, and then kind of fixing the broken ones so that we can, um, eventually get past the steep part of this curve and get to the get to the inflection point in a lower annual cost of maintenance, which is a maintenance mode. Housing ordinances, so cottage, um, that's already done, as you know, objective design standards already done. Um, the housing element, that's HE, that is in process, and, um, as you know, we have a joint meeting next week with the Planning Commission to have a first real big, um, it's the first significant, um, joint public discussion around the housing element. Um, and also the multifamily, um, this comes out of the existing housing, um, element. Uh, multifamily zoning change in neighborhood urban zones, so that's in process and expected to be going to the Planning Commission soon and eventually to the council. Um, we updated our city fees for revenue neutrality that happened earlier in the fiscal year. Um, the Katari Park, um, design should be complete, and we expect to be bidding it, um, this summer for construction. And, um, that's, um, it started with, uh, I mean, it started with the master plan that we had worked through with the community and, um. And this will essentially, um, the plan is, and it's designed to do the playgrounds, the picnic areas, the restrooms, landscaping, so basically all the elements of that master plan for Katari Park, except for the, um. There was a splash pad concept that was in the master plan that would not, that's not planned to be part of this at this time. So we've received the, um, electric car for, for police patrol, and, um, we just are waiting to send it to the outfitter. But I expect by the end of this fiscal year, it should be, uh, upfit and in service. And, um, it's definitely the first in Sonoma County, I think, aside from Fremont, the only one I'm aware of in California. And, uh, you know, most of these have been used for admin service, you know, purposes, things like that. I haven't seen one that's been used for actual patrol. So that's, and it's different in terms of how it's outfit. It's different equipment on it. And it's just a different vehicle than something you'd use for administrative purposes. Implement, implementation of the SAFE team, and this is, this is an example of a program that that wasn't even really on the radar, our radar screen collectively this time last year. At least not specifically, and it came up mid-year and, um, we teamed up with Warner Park and and, uh, implemented the programs, the mental health, uh, crisis response teams. And, um, as you know, that's twelve hours a day right now, but at some point next week, we expect to be at eighteen hours a day, seven days a week. And, um. We're also actively, uh, in conversation with Sonoma State University to potentially add them if that works out. So hopefully, um, it's a, it's ramping up now as they hire more people to, uh, to cover the shifts and and, um, hopefully the program will keep growing because it seems to be, um, very successful so far, so that's good. And then, of course, you know, in the background of all this is the continually changing COVID rules and and, um, it's just a kind of a, a slow-burning, ongoing emergency, it seems, but hopefully we're um, at the end of that now. So, um, that's, that's a high level of, you know, kind of what we've been, you know, what we've been working on, kind of the headliners for this year as well as. You know, and I, like I said, I won't be going through all the detail that's in the packet, but I'd be happy to, uh, to talk about any of those if anybody has any questions about it, and I'll just pause here.
All right, I'll look at my colleagues very quickly and see if anybody has any questions on this or the city manager. Not seeing any hands go up right now. So all right, Mr. Obid, we're ready to move forward.
All right, so, um. We just talked about this. And, um, as we get into the next year, these are just some, some things that at least, um. You know, as staff level, we see as, you know, significant issues that we just need to just keep our eye on. You know, PERS, as we talked about earlier, in this year, we did a lot to significantly reduce costs around that. But we're going to continue to need to keep our UAL within the policy limits, so that's going to be, uh, just a management issue as we develop budgets. And then, um, just a continuing need for significant infrastructure investments, um, primarily in streets, parks, sewer and water. And, um, as I mentioned earlier with streets, we're not quite at that inflection point yet, but, you know, we're continuing to, or we have been continuing to invest significantly in that, and, um. If we continue to do it over the next, the next, you know, three or three to maybe five years on the outside, then we're going to be at a pretty good steady state at that point. Parks, you know, for the master plan, you know. Ideally, we can continue to rotate through each fiscal year to a different park and make some of those upgrades that have been envisioned by the community. And then sewer, um, sewer is just a continual, um, process to, uh, to make sure it's operating at its, and it's a peak. Is peak condition, so. Um, like, like any infrastructure, sewer and water, they have different parts that are different ages. And as things get older, they, you know, start needing more, um, more care and maintenance. So at some point, you know, you got to start actually replacing, you got to, you go from maintenance mode to a, to a rebuild mode. And so for different segments as they, as they age out. And there's some parts of our sewer system that definitely are at that point where they just need to get replaced, and ultimately, this all helps us reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration that gets into the sewer system, which means less groundwater and stormwater we're having to pump around. And ultimately, less we have to send to the Laguna Treatment Plant for treatment, which is, um, the single largest expense in the sewer enterprise is the treatment. Um, and same with water, you know, um, the most significant expense there is purchasing water from the, from the water agency. And, um. You know, we just need to continue to make sure that we keep the water system and it's, um, in top shape so that continues to be safe and reliable for the community. So this is, um, this is nothing new, I think, for, for everyone here, but, um. This, you know, the cities, every city has a little bit of a different revenue mix. Katari, as you know, does not have any, um, any like transit occupancy taxes, which is, we're the only city in, in, um, the county that doesn't. We don't have utility user taxes, which many other cities in the county have. And so a lot of our revenue, um, the majority of it in our general fund comes from, um, sales tax. And it's a double-edged sword, um, because it, you know, does. It's been, you know, it's been good for us to be able to make these, um, service and infrastructure improvements that we've been wanting to make, but um, the downside is that it can be less stable than other sources of revenue. So as the economy goes, the economy naturally fluctuates. Sales tax changes tend to be, um, much more dramatic than you'd see like in property tax or, you know, in other kind of sources of revenue. So, um. To, to help address that, you know, um, we've been just continuing on a sort of a multi-year path of in, at least with regard to sales tax, continuing to try to diversify that, so you're kind of widening the base of, um, of businesses. So it diversifies the industries that are in the community, which provides a lot of benefits, both in jobs, but also in diversified tax, um, revenue that, um, sales tax revenue that is more, um, resistant to economic fluctuations. But with them, we've also, at the same time, been working to, um, to grow other revenue sources that hopefully, um. You know, are going to be, are going to further buffer us against, um, against wild fluctuations in revenue during economic cycles. And that's, you know, cannabis, primarily the cannabis, um, business, uh, revenue and also TOT lodgings, that's you know, having a hotel, which we've been continuing to pursue. And then, um, on the, again, getting back to the, the gas station, um, topic that we talked about earlier. Um, currently, gas stations do make a significant, do contribute a significant amount of money to the city's general fund. So depending on the year, it's, you know, anywhere between thirty, um, in this latest quarter, it was like fifteen percent. So it has been fluctuating that with COVID, it went down because less, just less miles traveled. But, um, it's anywhere between thirty and fifteen percent, so, um. That is, you know, that is going to continue to decrease over time. And, um, I would expect by twenty-thirties can be significantly less than it is now. So, um, just something, as we look to the future, to anticipate and, um, just find. It just reiterates the need to, to diversify and find other sources of revenue. And then it doesn't explicitly mention it here, but I mentioned it earlier, which was like, um, updating the fee structure for revenue neutrality. That's the other side of this coin is making sure that, you know, as, as my as my wife says, the whole of, you know, the, the law of holes is when you find yourself in one, don't keep on digging, so. You know, that's the other side of this equation is we try not to do things that are going to, you know, just lose money for no reason. So that's the revenue neutrality and the fees, um, the CFTs for housing development, so that we don't add additional service needs and infrastructure costs that, that, um, that don't at least cover the cost. So all that's the, kind of the, the whole kind of picture in terms of trying to move forward in a more revenue-stable, long-term position. And then, um, some other just big, you know, big issues, greenhouse gas reduction measures, of course, we just talked about that earlier, but, um. I will, as I said, I'll come back with that goal highlighted and the, and elevated in the goals and objectives. Um, and then, you know, the other really big issue that we're, um, that, that we're continuing to grapple with as a city and as a region is affordable housing and our priority development areas and mixed-use infill. So, um, as we get into the housing element conversations, I think there's ways to try to accomplish both of it. We're both, um, addressing some of our housing needs, but also hopefully structured in a way that will encourage the PDA area development, mixed-use development, so hopefully accomplish two goals at the same time. I'll just run through the, um, one thing I will say real quick before I get into the proposed projects for the departments. And, um, and I, I can pause between each one of these departments in case somebody wants to stop and ask any questions, but. When you look at the, uh, when you look at the worksheets that were included in the packet, um, there's an effective there's an effective FTE column that's shown there and a bunch of day to day tasks, right, and regional representation and then projects. So I don't know if I if I've mentioned this in the wild, but I'll just, you know, in case somebody doesn't know. How we build these is how we build these sheets is we use our time card system internally to to create these hours. So what you're seeing in the in the day to day duties and the regional representation is actual hours charged to these items over the last, so the time period that we used was a full full year, it was last calendar year. So these are actual times for the last calendar year. When we get into proposed projects, those are projected times based on perceived level of effort. But the other, and that obviously changes every year so that the piece of the project is we see a lot of time card system and we don't include it in the data to do these that we use for this worksheet. In case anybody was not aware of that, I just wanted to let you know that's how those effective FTEs are built. They're built on actual time. So. All right. So city manager and recreation. These are some proposed projects for the year, and we've been working on digital file management for a while, but we're we're wanting to kind of step it up next year and really get through a lot of our, we have a lot of files and storage and really get through those and and really get a lot more digitized and get it available. So it's easily accessible. It just ultimately leads to better service because it's just less time. We have to be rooting around through paper files and trying to find stuff and calling boxes from storage. It just makes things more available for for the staff to work more efficiently, but also for the public that request documents. We're also, this manager's department's also leading a website transition. So we're we're updating our website. And we've just embarked on that process. So we're starting this fiscal year, but it's going to go into next next year. And with that will become will come new tools and new kind of new new ways to do things on our website. So that's kind of exciting. The city seal redesign. So I I know everyone's seen the logo that's been updated. That's, you know, kind of like a it's more of a fun logo. The seal is the chief of Tati profile. And we're going to be working on updating that that seal design. Veranda Fletti barn design. So we've already started working on that. We've had a, we've had an initial public workshop to talk about, you know, what we do with the barns out there at the ranch. And we're going to continue to have those next year. So we're going to have some concept designs this fiscal year, but next year, the conversation is about taking it into at least some level of design and potentially looking for funding opportunities to get them built. Economic Development 2.0. So this is a joint project with community development. So we have some you know, there's some projects that have been previously identified that we haven't gotten to yet out in the industrial section, kind of making the zoning the same freeway retail on Redwood Drive, kind of making some changes there to just make it hopefully function better for kind of how how businesses are evolving, you know, post recession. I do expect to be, and we're still wrapping up the SP thirteen eighty-three conversation with Recology, but we're going to be moving into franchise negotiations next fiscal year because our franchise agreement is coming up to an end. So that's going to be kind of a significant project next year. And as I mentioned earlier, the the hope is that as we get Catati Park, the design done, that getting out the bid, hopefully that project going into construction. We're going to be shifting our focus to Putnam Park, getting that design going in the public outreach process so that we can start firming up what that design and construction project will be. Which parts of that master plan are going to be included in this design and ultimately construction? And then, you know, if that kind of goes per this cycle, then not in twenty-two, twenty-three, but twenty-three, twenty-four, it would go into construction. And then the next project, next park project would go into design. So that's the general idea there. And then elections are coming up, as you all know, so that's something we'll be helping administer locally and working with the county registrar. And then finally, evaluating new legislative management systems. So the the current system we have is is fine. It works okay, but it's not really being actively improved anymore by the developers. Granicus is the owner of the system. And it's one of their, one of their, one of the products that they purchased several years ago, and they're they're kind of maintaining it, but they're not really adding new features and investing a lot into it. So we're starting to see the writing on the wall. It's not a rush project, but something that we're starting to or we want to start looking into next year and see what the other alternatives are. And I'll just pause right there, Mayor, in case there's any questions or comments.
Definitely. I'm going to slide over here and look to my colleagues in the council. See if any hands pop up. I'm not seeing any right away here. Why don't we just take a quick second and we'll check with the public and see if anybody has any input on the city manager portion of this? If our city clerk could help us with that.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees, please use your raise hand icon. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes. Hello, City Council. Very nice to see the objections. I just wanted to make a comment on the Putnam Park design, the initial design concept. To the east of that boundary, there is a water course that's running down it, and that drains from a lot of the hills in Catati. And it's a, it's is an opportunity, I think, to really try and do something that could engage the public in more water issues and or in local, just just something that can be bring in the water and also slow the water down. As you know, we have a big history of just trying to pave it and pipe it away. And that's certainly the effect on the hillsides. And there's going to be more development on the hillside. So I'm just bringing that up that within that design, there's also a a potential hydrology, natural design that could be brought in. Thank you very much.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment for now.
Very good. Thank you for that. Bring it back to the council. I will remind Mr. Obit, I believe, we still have somewhere in our files a rather nice series of proposals and rough plans for a lot of projects relating to paths, walking, water management, water feature restoration. I think there was some good concept there as we moved to looking at some of the parks and some of these other things, particularly with the window of perhaps some greater funding available for a year, a few years. Maybe we can fit some of those back in. That's a good reminder from Mr. Hancock, because those were projects that worked and served the community and the environment in a number of ways very nicely. All right. You know, one thing I wanted to ask before we move on very quickly, Mr. Obit, because I imagine this would fall under your purview largely, although it would be community development too. We had mentioned and talked about earlier this year looking into revisiting solar requirements to some degree, or how that might work with new construction as well as new businesses and potentially also the use, how that might fit into a hundred percent renewable power, basically as a GHD reduction thing. I just, I didn't see it on the list. I'm not sure if it's still fitting in this year or not. So I wanted to ask about that and just kind of put a little check mark next to it.
Yeah, I, the thought there was that we would, we have a building code update for, that'll be effective January one, twenty twenty-three. And so we're going to start working on it this calendar year. And the thought is, is that it would be, that would be a good sort of, that would be a good platform to use to build in some of these other related kind of measures because the building code updates are significant around like natural gas, like discouraging natural gas use, solar use. And so we wanted to make sure that we knew what was in the building codes so that we could tear off of it rather than hopefully not craft something that then is over partially obsolete because of the building code. So that that was the thought is later in this calendar year. So in this, beginning this fiscal year, we would look at those issues. Yeah.
I certainly would love to be part of that this year. And also, I do think that speaks to the concern that some of us raised. There are not a lot of places where we can put our hand on the wheel to adjust or help with GHD reductions. Here's one of the few places in the city we actually can. So I look forward to that. And I see some other hands raised. I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Harvey, then go to Councilmembers Ford and Sparks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe their hands were up first, but I'll go first. It just seems to me that in the digital file management that that might be something that we may look to be able to utilize either some interns or outsourcing that to help move that along if you really want to get that moving rather than utilize the valuable resources of the small staff that we have. So that may be an opportunity there to get that moving because we certainly don't want to have, you know, tons of boxes of things. So just a thought.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. I I agree with the mayor that the the building code up and with the city manager that the building code update ought to be looked at through as an opportunity to to what'd you say, put our hand on the wheel or something? That sounds painful, but somehow gum up the words. Yeah. And and so I appreciate that. I I was just going to ask the city manager on this list, the Recreation Department is within your department or division or however we described the pieces of the city. But there aren't any projects here that are specifically recreation related. And I wonder if you could just describe it, if you kind of have a vision for the recreation program in the coming year, anything different or?
Yeah, well, a lot of the, a lot of what recreation does is operational, but we but they are heavily involved in the Veranda Fletti barn design and the programming on the ranch as that kind of gets off the ground and starts developing. And also the Putnam Park, they take, they're leading that typically, you know, I mean, that's what we did at Park. Because they're they're sort of in the best position to talk about playground equipment and park layouts. I mean, you know, so so internally, what ends up happening is recreation leads that effort until it gets to the point where all the kind of all the pieces are nailed down and then it's kind of shipped off to Public Works to go get it built, you know?
Got it. Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you. I was hoping to just make a note that our ad hoc committee is going to be coming with some recommendations that I think we don't know what the recommendations are yet, haven't been decided or formalized, but I I believe that it might fall, implementing them might fall under the city manager's office and Recreation possibly. So I was, and I discussed this with Damian, but I was hoping to see some sort of placeholder for ad hoc just time for the city manager's office to work on some ad hoc recommendations. Just because if if otherwise, we're waiting a whole nother fiscal year before we can get started on some of that stuff. So.
And I will note, if you look at on packet page six, if you look at the projects that we had planned for this year and you look at the added list that was added to the city manager's list during the year, that is larger than the amount of projects we had planned. And I note that they're all, almost all of them, I think, with one exception, one or two exceptions complete. So I I think we do definitely have room for a placeholder and I unless the city manager says differently, I would be surprised to see anything different, Councilmember Sparks.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
And I just want to follow that up real quickly. That that would address some of my concerns about Councilgo four not appearing in the the project list for many of the departments and including the city manager recreation. And and I think it we need to find some ways to start addressing that. And and of course, the ad hoc is going to help us figure out what those are.
All right. I'm going to check one more time with everybody. I'm not seeing any hands further. So, Mr. Obit, unless you have anything further to wrap up the city manager's office, I think we're ready to move to community development.
All right. Oh, I guess we're going to make a stop at administrative services first. Sorry about that.
That works.
All right. Okay, so investment planning, this is something that we've had on the back burner for a while. And I mean, as you know, most of the city's funds are invested. We do have some in CDs and those kind of instruments, but most of it's invested with Leif or Skiff, which is the local St. Thomas County version of Leif. And, you know, we've just been kind of waiting to be at a point where it would be worth the time to to give it some dedicated focus. And so we think this coming year would be a good time just to sit down and just make sure you know, that you know, that we're that we're utilizing the resources we have in the best place as possible to achieve the goals of the city. So fixed asset and workflow processes that this would be, you know, this is something that we're looking at with Public Works, both, you know, fixed asset, we have a fixed asset system in the sense that we use it for for accounting purposes for our financials, but we've been, we've been looking at systems to bring all of our infrastructure into one, kind of one program and and make sure it's all, you know, that it's inventoried. And I'm talking capital equipment, right? Not like pencils and pens and stuff, but like larger capital equipment and making sure the maintenance schedules are defined and really kind of getting all that solidified. Digital records, workflow. So this is a, this is a part of the digital recordization process, but but in the administrative services world, it's, you know, you know, we're also looking at, to some, to various degrees, we're looking at this in different departments too. Like, how do we how do we set up a system so that there never is paper? It's a digital thing as it routes and, you know, you know, whether it's AP or accounts receivable or whatever, you know, just coming up with workflows. Updating our backflow program and our Catati Municipal Code Review. That's something that just needs, it's just at that time or it needs to be updated again. We have a variety of IT special projects that that just need some focused attention, and we're trying to figure out how to best accomplish that. AD is just, that's Active Directory. It's a Microsoft thing, just maintenance of that. Licensing, security, Itron is the is the meter systems we use for our water system. Anyway, there there's just some projects of each one of those that just need some focused attention. And so that's what that's about. The hydrant meter program update, you'll see this also with Public Works. Public Works calls it a hydrant ETM. So the issue is that we have, you know, for construction, we lend out hydrant meters. So contractor will come in and rent, essentially rent the hydrant meter. And then they are supposed to read it and then we build them and then we bring it back. We do collect a deposit so that, you know, if they never show up again, we can hopefully replace the meter. But it's kind of a quirky system because it seems like it's not uncommon for contractors just to take the meter and like never ever come back with it. And we never know, you know, we never know how much they used and we never, you know, never see the meter again. And we can, you know, we have a deposit to recover the meter, the meter cost, but not the not the water cost. So we're not necessarily the water cost. So we're looking at something that would be more of like an automatic dispensing unit that contractors can use that would be attached to our water system. That's what a ATM is in this, in this context here. And then IBS, that's our payroll system. So we're getting some refinements to that, but that's a bit of a project. TOT taxation process and documentation. We, you know, in the in the eventuality, the hopeful eventuality that we'll have a hotel here, we'll need to, so other local tax besides cannabis business tax, this is a local, locally collected tax as opposed to property or sales, which we collect by other entities. So developing that process in advance of if if the hotel actually does move forward, and then we would be developing that. So that's a contingent sort of work effort. And then business license audits and process reviews. Just that's a continual kind of thing that we have to do every every couple of years or every several years is to look at our business license system, make sure it's working well both for us and for our businesses, so it's convenient and easy to use, but also that that we're making sure that all businesses are participating. So that is, that's kind of what that is, and I, that's kind of it for this unless you guys have any questions about any of these items.
All right, with that perfect segue, I'll look to my colleagues and see if you have any questions. Looking, looking, not seeing any hands. All right, well, I do have one for you regarding the hydrant meter. I certainly agree and see the need for some improved system for that. I'm curious, how are you, how do we really ensure that somebody uses it? Because it's not exactly rocket sizes to use a hydrant and take water from it. And so this is basically an honor system to ensure that people are using, which I would have assumed was sufficient. But if we're more than often not even seeing the devices back, perhaps I'm misapprehending just how good this could be. I I just certainly would suggest it strikes me during an ongoing drought in an area that's historically always a little tight in water, that certainly wouldn't hurt to have slightly sharper teeth in how we do this and enforce this, but if you could just give us an idea of how we actually enforce this or propose to enforce its use, I'd be curious.
Well, so currently, you know, when we have, so it'll either be, it'll be a project of some type in the city, and so we, you know, when the hydrant is first checked out currently. And so when we're there inspecting it, it's pretty clear and pretty, I mean, I think pretty well enforced during the project because it's there onsite or somewhere nearby, and we can see it connected, and we can see the water trucks filling up there and using the water there. It's it's just when the projects end that sometimes the contractor doesn't come back in with the meter. And in, you know, we've, we definitely tightened up the process around requiring reads, you know, rather than waiting for extended periods of time to get reads. But there's still instances, I think, where we don't get all the reads and it's it's just, it's just clunkier, and then we lose, you know, and then we lose the hydrant, and we have to buy a new one. And so the the thought is that this could be just be a, just a more streamlined process where there's a essentially a you know, like an automatic connection where they have to basically tell the device who they are. And then it records how much flow they take, and then it just automatically fills them basically, you know, so it's it's much more immediate.
Well, it sounds like we have good eyes on the project, and it's basically just tightening up the process at the end, and maybe so. I do see a hand from Vice Mayor Harvey. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So Damian, typically, how many of these do we have out at one time?
We might have like three or four out at a time.
I mean, it it just seems to me that, you know, we regularly meet, read everyone else's meters that that, since there's not a a whole lot of these, that it should be part of the regular meter reading process that you have to go to these three places and read those meters too. Because otherwise, it seems like it's fraught with the ability to, I hate to say cheat the system. And I agree with with the mayor, you know, especially in these times where water is so short, I I think we need to be sure that it's being metered properly and utilized properly to keep everybody on the up and up.
Damian, do you mind if I jump in real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Angela.
Okay, so we do, we reach out to everyone, all the contractors who have announced, have a hydrant meter outsourced. So we reach out to them every month. We were doing it bi-monthly. We're like, no, you know, to follow the billing cycle for the rest of our utilities, like, no, we need to do this every month. So we reach out to them every month, we get the meter read, and we send them the bill for that current meter usage regardless of their deposit balance. So we do collect those funds and bring those in to cover those costs and keep the deposit balance. And we keep that current as we go along. Unfortunately, like Damian said, it's the end of the project when they are cleaning up and they take a meter and somebody's off onto a new job in the next city, and they take the meter with them. So we never get that end read as well as the meter back. And so we've had several that we've lost over the last period, and so we never get that end piece of it. And so we don't know or have that assurance that it's not back in the city being used again because we consider it lost and done. And we've now replaced it with a new meter. And we've taken in that deposit and bought a new meter. So that's where we are, but we want to just make sure how do we control the actual meter flow usage as to what's going out of our system and being used instead of being reliant on these hydrant meters that we we do track and we do trace them, the ones that we have, but the ones that we no longer have, we have no assurance on.
Well, maybe what we need to consider is making that deposit fee a little bit higher so it encourages them to return it because it sounds like it's just a, for them, cost of doing business. Oh, well, it doesn't cost me very much, so I'm just going to take it with me. So maybe we might want to consider making that deposit enough to encourage better behavior.
Yeah, I think I think inherent in all this is that if you have, you know, if you have a defined or a couple, you know, defined places where you can get water, like every contractor that's working in the city gets water at those couple defined places. It's really easy to monitor, and if you see someone hooking up a hydrant meter anywhere else, you know they shouldn't be. You know, it just makes it easier to police, I think, too. If someone obscures with one of our meters and puts it up later, a year later.
All right. So with it, I'm not seeing any further hands from my colleagues. Why don't we take a moment to see if we have the comments from the public on admin services proposed projects?
Thank you, Mayor Lenman. Looking to our attendees, use your raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. And Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Um, yes, thank you. I just want to ask a question that I often ask in this area, so maybe it's already covered as this is proposed new projects, but I appreciate all the efficient internet services, but who's responsible for the cybersecurity? I mean, it's it's a multifaceted area, it's involves work culture, people and how they go about things. It only becomes a problem when it fails. We have the recent sad problem of Sebastopol cyber theft, or 1.2 million from its reserves. So anyway, it's just a question of who's responsible for ensuring that at least somebody's got an eye on cybersecurity and making sure that there's the right professionals employed for it. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to answer that?
Well, let's see if we have any further comments first from the public, and then and then I'll switch to you, Mr. Obit. Does that wrap up our comments?
That does.
Miss Burges?
Yes.
Very good. If you'd like to speak to that tonight, Mr. Obit, feel free.
Yeah, I was just gonna just say that we have, we have a contractor that you know, that we we work, that we work with that evaluates our security systems, and we are constantly, we have programs to constantly monitor our networks for intrusions and spam filters and all the best practices. We recently did a cybersecurity audit of our system or, and you know, in the process of of implementing, we've already implemented some of the recommendations, but we're still in the process of implementing some of the other recommendations. And in terms of, at the, on the city side, it's basically a joint project of admin services in the city manager's office to to make sure that our systems are secure.
Yeah, I I think it might be ideal in the future for these reviews to have just at least a rough outline of what our security processes look like. Obviously, we don't want to advertise everything, and I'm sure but at the same time, it would be good for the public to know that we actually are paying attention to this because as Mr. Hancock put it very well, $1.2 million lost to cyber theft is certainly motivational for a city our size. So that that is something to pay attention to. With that, seeing no further questions from the council, why don't we go ahead and move to our next item?
All right, so back to community development now. So housing, housing element is obviously the single biggest thing that we're working on right now in new development. And that that housing cycle should be wrapping up at the end of this calendar year. And then, you know, but still on the same fiscal year, we're going to be switching gears and starting to work on implementing the programs in the housing element. So once you adopt it, once HCD basically approves your housing element, then you move into the implementation phase. So the first half of the fiscal year is is the housing element itself. The second half of the fiscal year is going to be moving to implementation. As we talked about earlier, we have, they have the building code update they're going to be working on, plus the GHG measures, so that's the that is the solar, the the charging, you know, all the other things that we've talked about that revolve and are kind of closely intertwined with the building code update itself. The bike and pet master plan is is has been underway, is still underway. We expect it's going to, it's going to go into next year, be next fiscal year before it's complete. The proposal, there's a proposal to look at the Santero Way specific plan and and update that. It was originally drafted, I believe, back in 2004. It's fairly out of date at this point. And I think, given that the smart rail system has now materialized, and we kind of know what that is and how that functions and kind of, you know, it's, we're probably in a much, you know, all these we didn't have the benefit of all that foresight back then when this plan was originally drafted, so it just seems to us that it would be a good time to look at the plan and just make sure it still accomplishes what the community wants to accomplish with it. Housing Development 2.0, I already spoke to this. Housing Administration Establishment, so this is, once you make an affordable unit, you need to manage it, make sure it stays affordable. So, you know, we've been working with the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County for our for sale units, but we're still looking and exploring options for the best way to manage our rental for affordable housing. And really hoping to to get that really nailed down in the next fiscal year, so that hopefully it does what it's supposed to do, which is fully preserve all the affordable housing that's created. And then this last one is just red because on the worksheets, it's shown as below the baseline, but there's always new housing, new state housing legislation. So that's always hot and heavy every year. There's a bunch of, bunch of new bills, so it takes quite a bit of effort to track what's going on and and respond to whatever. This new out there that needs to be, you know, be addressed either through new ordinance, the ordinances, modifying ordinances or or other types of actions, so. That is it for community development. Be happy to answer any questions. Oh, actually, one other thing I just wanted to note on this on the worksheet that's in the packet. For some reason, the the bottom two lines didn't print on the Community Development Department, the one that that sums up the time, total with projects and the budgeted FTEs. But the total with projects is 4.15, in case you wanted to know, and the budgeted FTEs is four. With that, I really, I really will pause there.
All right.
Return any questions.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm going to look to the council and see if anybody has any questions for the city manager on this section. Vice Mayor Harvey, go ahead.
A question, but I do believe that this legislation is going to be very hot and heavy, as you pointed out with housing things, and so it's going to be really important for all of us to stay on top of that because it also sounds like there's going to be a lot of things coming up that may be contradictory to one another. And so we're going to have to really keep our eyes and ears open on on this legislation session from what I'm hearing.
Yes, would not be surprised. Councilmember Sparks, did I see a hand from you?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that I I sounded like Damian got cut off just a little bit. Did you say the total allocated FTE was four, or was it four point something?
Four, it was four.
So we're already over our budget, even not counting implementing new state housing legislation? Is that right?
Yeah, I, in a way, but you also have to remember in this department, we also have contract staff too that aren't included in that FTE allocation, so it's a it's a general guide that, you know, when you get to implementing new housing legislation, you're they're probably, you know, getting close to capacity, even including contract staff.
Okay, thank you.
And would this be the process this time of year, Mr. Obit, if there was a situation we're finding with changes in essentially the work required in the community in the country, the state, the county, that if we had a need for increased FTEs, you would be broaching that to us right now? The potentiality, at least?
Yes, yes.
Good, I I I agree with Councilmember Sparks. The same question kind of came to my mind as I was weighing some of the balance of projects that were done, not done, trying to assess FTEs in this department, and I finally recognized that this would probably be the place if you recognize something that you were concerned was a roadblock, that we'd be discussing it, so that's maybe helpful for us to look at it that way. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Oh, yes, sorry. I think the other thing that's going to come up, Damian, is the fact that a lot of this stuff, because it's state mandated, it will take time for us to, unfortunately, falls on our hands to educate the public because there's a lot of sentiment out there on on things that are happening that we really have no choice in. And so that education of what happens with these bills and how it impacts us will actually fall on the city. It's not something that we're doing, it's something that we're trying to react to because it's been imposed upon us. So unfortunately, I think that staff will need to take time to prepare that kind of informational, educational material so that the public can understand what's happening.
Yeah, I I think, you know, when we have the, we have the joint meeting next week, and we're also looking at potentially another meeting in March, some sort of public meeting in March. I I think that's going to be part of the conversation is, you know, the the universe of housing legislation and how how do you distill that in a way that preserves the community character as well, you know? But also accomplishes the housing policy goals, so it's a balancing act.
It is a balancing act because the other thing that comes into play with this, and you see a lot of conversation on social media, is housing versus water, things like that. And, you know, kind of that education where that cross-section happens and that the plans for water, a lot of the plans already incorporate some of that, not all of it. Because as the legislation changes, you know, that there is more housing that gets put back on us that may or may not be included in that, but a lot of that is included in the forecasts for water, and I think that's also an education process that we need to utilize for folks.
Yeah. I'll certainly add to that. When it comes to talking about water, I always like to hear what Councilmember Harvey has to say because she's been paying attention to this for a long time. But it does strike me that many of these plans that we've had throughout this county, whatever we may or may not think of them, have been in place for a long time and were fully vetted for water usage. But that was a different world 10 years or 20 years ago, even when these plans were put together. And we're looking at a place where maybe before with the water cycle that we used to have, that was workable, perhaps. Again, always difficult to have some certainty in that because it was a complex issue, and there were certainly interests on all sides pushing that. But nowadays, with the quote unquote new normal, I'm not sure if that holds as much truth, so certainly a fertile area for discussion. So with that, I'll check one more time with my colleagues. So with that, I'll check one more time with my colleagues. Any last comments before we move on to our next item from anyone? Not seeing any hands. Very good, Mr. Obit. I think we're ready to move forward.
All right, so Public Works, this is a this is a parter, so bear with me. Public Works is always really ambitious. So we've been there's been work on the gateway designs. This is a gateway to the city. The first project, the gate is proposed to be around commerce. There's been, there's quite a bit of improvement going on around there already, as you know, around Parks Roundabout and some of the connecting features into Catati. So this was believed to be a good first place to to put a gateway improvement and monument sign there. And then on the street side of things, this is, so this is, this follows the same sort of program we've been doing in prior years. We have a preservation project and rehabilitation project. The preservation project is like generally slurry seals and things to keep your roads that are in good shape, keep them in good shape. And then the rehabilitation is to basically fix the broken ones and get them into good shape so that then they can just go into the preservation bucket, so to speak, moving forward. And the, so we're already in design on the preservation project and that would go into construction this summer. The rehabilitation project is, will go into design this fiscal year, most likely, but then it would most likely, I believe it'll be constructed next calendar year, but still in this next coming fiscal year. We're also looking at starting design on Redwood Drive and Cypress. So those are federal aid eligible roadways and they're an SCTA priority for us. So we're hopefully going to be getting some grant money to leverage our own local funds for those two roadway reconstructions. Highway 116 and West Catati intersection, as you know, we on the property there now. And we're looking to get that design kicked off and it's going to be given that it's a Caltrans process, it's going to be probably a multi-year process before we be ready to get to construction, but we'd be looking at getting design going. The downtown connectivity and safety project, the Quick Strike project, that's what it's called, with is in design and it's redesigned just for the final elements of it. And going to the federalization process right now. So that's the federalization process should be done by early next year. So that should go into construction in the spring of next year. And this is, in case anyone doesn't remember what this is, this is West Sierra Avenue and La Plaza, the inner ring streets around the La Plaza Park. And then traffic safety improvements. This is something that we've been doing for for many years now, just to set aside of money for little traffic improvements here and there as they come up through the year. And some of them are already pre-programmed because they've been identified as higher priority improvements. All right, EV stations, La Plaza, I mean, if we're going to be optimistic installation, we have a conceptual design already for those EV. These are fast chargers, so 480 volt EV chargers. And we'd be looking for ideally for some grant money. Perhaps with the build back, build back better funding that might be available. Putnam Park improvements, as I mentioned, that would City Manager's Office Recreation specifically would be handling the initial design and then final design works. Catati Park, we finish, we will be finishing designing this fiscal year and then it's going to go into construction. Probably well either the very end of this fiscal year or the the start of 2022, 2023. Vronda Fleety Ranch Barn. So if we do go into design, they would be involved in that once we get past the concept phase. And continuing improvements around the City Hall complex. So community center windows, which were slated for replacement, but the cost estimate got too high this this current fiscal year. So it got pushed into looking to push it into next year as well as just general maintenance painting in the City Hall building areas. So that's the community center and City Hall, Catati Room, that general area. City Hall parking reconfiguration. We've been looking at options to reorient some parking, add some additional electric vehicle stalls here in City Hall. And that's what that is. Hydro ATM, we already talked about that, so I won't get into that again. Sewer pipeline repairs. So there's some higher priority pipeline repairs on the sewer side that we're that we're looking at. And I guess most immediately, potentially West Sierra Avenue, since that's going to be reconstructed with a Quick Strike project, you know, once you repave a road, you really don't want to cut into it for a while. So if we're going to do sewer or any sort of underground repairs, we try to do it ahead of paving project. So with the recent sewer videoing, we found some defects in that pipelines, West Sierra. So we're looking at looking at getting that going ahead of this paving work. And then finally, unified request tracking. So this is, this is the other, kind of the public facing side of asset management. So on the backend, on the city side, you know you have asset management, but on the on the public facing side, you you can, you know, you often can see like a a citizen request tool, like if you're in a park or you're on a street, you see something and you want to, you know, bring up your phone and put a pin in the map and say, hey, this stop sign's faded or this park bench is broken or whatever, you know, whatever the issue is. And so it's kind of the the next step and really getting, so like a process like that where someone easily requests it and then get direct feedback from the city on 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 that request. So we haven't, we've done some initial exploration of systems, but we still have more work to do for sure. But anyway, that's that is it with Public Works. So I'll just pause there.
Very good. Councilmember Sparks, I think I saw your hand go up first. I'm not sure if it was you or Mr. Ford, but I'm going to go with you this time in the interest of fairness.
Okay, I think I was second, but that's okay. Happy to happy to jump the line. I just wanted to add on to the unified request tracking. This came up when we were talking about the local road safety plan and all these small traffic safety improvements that people request that didn't quite make it into the plan because they weren't part of intersections or weren't eligible for the plan for some reason. I would love to see us set aside some time to develop a system that we use to equitably and transparently prioritize requests that come from the public in a way so people know if they ask for something or if they've been asking for something, they can see and know whether that's on the list or or just have some transparency around how we're prioritizing those requests. I think if we're if we're doing a unified public facing request tracking system, that would be a good time to think about how are we working this on the internally to prioritize these things. So.
All right. And let's see next. I'll just point out that if I consistently pick you out of order by the end of the evening, I've treated everybody fairly. So this actually might be a system. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor Lamond. So the strategy is to wait to raise your hand until other people have. Is that it? So my question was about the street reconstruction projects like Cypress and Redwood Drive and both of those hit city city borders, you know, at other jurisdictions. And I wonder if there's any cross jurisdiction planning for streets like that, like it would make a lot more sense to do Cypress all the way out to railroad than than stopping at the city boundary or to do, you know, I don't know what if where Redwood Drive is on Rutter Park's plan or anything like that. I mean, it's come up on East Catati a lot too, since that road seems to go in and out of the two cities, not really, but.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, there's really like loose coordination. When you're talking about federalized projects, the timing is so hard to coordinate. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't still be talking to them though and seeing if we can coordinate. I'll make sure that we talk to the county on the Cypress example, we talk to Rutter Park on Redwood to see if there's any sort of efficiencies that can be gained there. But my initial thought is that the federalization process is so it's just, it's hard to predict.
Inflexible, yeah, unpredictable. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
All right. Next, I'll go to Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Hart.
Thank you, Mayor Lamond. Damian, when you were talking about the EV stations and selling more of those, didn't, isn't Newsom proposing offering some money for EV stations throughout the state?
I'm sure, yeah, I mean, they've had several rounds of funding, but they tend to at the state level, they tend to focus on like if it's in the parking lot, that's what you're referring to at City Hall here.
Or in La Plaza.
Yeah. So the state does focus on some, you know, fast charging stations and then the federal government's also going to be putting money there too. So I think there's probably some good opportunities in La Plaza. For for City Hall, for regular like light vehicle EV charging, it's just not sexy anymore to most people that do grant funding. So I mean, unless, you know, unless it's unless you're like a, you know, like an EVgo or a Electrify America or a Tesla or you're building out like hundreds of these things to build out like, you know, a handful in a parking lot is probably, there probably won't be grant opportunities around that, but I'm not too worried about it because we have a pretty readily available electric supply, given that it's right there on the building and and the improvements be relatively lower cost compared to like a dedicated charging location like La Plaza would be where you have to bring in special electrical infrastructure, new transformers, you know, run new underground, create new you know, you basically need to repave the lot so that you have the right access for ADA. There's a lot that goes into that for a for a dedicated charging lot, but I do think I do think that there will be grant opportunities there.
Great. And then on the unified request tracking system, do they have any of those, excuse me, any of those systems that are Karen proof? I can imagine that could be a nightmare with some some citizens out there.
Yeah, I'm, I don't think so, no. I think it's just, you know, but I mean, you know, you get phone calls and emails from, you know, the small handful of people that are like that already. So I don't think it would really change anything. It's just a different way to communicate, you know?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
I, yes, I'm glad that Damian's going to contact the county on the rest of Cypress, but the last time I checked, Cypress was slated to be turned to gravel. It was at the bottom, bottom, bottom of their list and they were going to put $0 into it and let it return to its natural state. So I hope you have better progress, but that was how the county deemed it the last time they went through their roads. They viewed it as not a well-traveled road and that was their take on it. So maybe you'll have better luck.
Well, okay.
Yeah, it was pretty sad because once the high, if there's something going on on the highway, people get off there on railroad and they come down Cypress. But from the county's perspective, it's not a utilized road and they're going to put $0 into it.
That's a little surprising, given that it's a federalized roadway, but.
Yeah, well, maybe they changed their minds, so we can only hope.
Well, let's see, I have no real questions. I will just say in general, replying to my colleague's comments, I do like the idea if we're going to look into a a process where people can report items and perhaps actually see a list, have an idea, get an automated reply that has been replied, something that could even let them know where it might fall. Now, I think that's all well and good. I think the farther along you get in terms of actually saying if something's been accepted and when they might see it gets more difficult, certainly to do without some human intervention. I would just add the caveat, if we go there, I think this is a great public service and it's wonderful, but I would encourage definitely adding time. It's my experience over 10 years here, even with the best estimates and the leeway that staff has always given me, more often than not, something's popped up. Usually several things have popped up and it goes longer, sometimes somewhat significantly longer than we might have initially expected. And I'm kind of used to that now, but as a member of the public, they might be disappointed if they have an expectation that something is going to would happen within a a couple of quarters and it doesn't happen for twice that. So just a suggestion for that. So let's see, we have not had public comment on Public Works and I know we did cover a lot. So I'll take a break here and open it up to the public and see if we have any questions or comments from the public, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lamond. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello, council. I guess I'm here this evening listening to all the different projects. Thank you very much. I do use the Unified Request Tracking System for Sonoma County and sometimes things can happen and then actually you get notified two months later on that it actually happened. So but it happened pretty fast, I think, to begin with. The the real question I'd like to ask is about the West Catati 116 highway junction and about the issue that I've been banging a drum on, just the pedestrian connectivity. I'm on it. I do notice that the property has now been acquired, so that's in that area to straighten it up. I'd like to point out, and this is also from a discussion elsewhere, that even though we're working on pedestrian and bicycle plans and our pedestrian and bicycle plan does indicate connectivity for pedestrians across that area, it does seem the professionals aren't reading those plans. They're not conveying them. I do think this came up with the local road safety when that junction was presented on the screen as a conceptual. It didn't indicate pedestrians crossing that point. So I'm just really asking, is this plan for Highway 116 and West Catati, it's going to be long term going in here, but it's, is it, is it going to consider pedestrians and cyclists, bicyclists to cross that area over to the west side, which has a lot of benefit for people being able to connect across there. So that's my question. Thank you very much.
Mayor Lamond?
And I'll pause and see.
Please go ahead.
That will end public comment.
That's perfect. That was just the question I had. All right. Mr. Obit, I think we've covered this and it basically has to do with subsequent development for some things to happen. But if you'd like to speak just a little further to Mr. Hancock's concern here, just kind of as a rough update, that would be helpful.
Sure, Mayor. So the design, the realignment design would would have the intersection designed as well as connecting pedestrian pedestrian bikeways from West Catati Avenue. But as you know, when you get to 116 and you cross over, you have to land somewhere. And so the the north, the north side is what I consider the north side, kind of a Lowe's side of 116 that ultimately needs to be developed so that there's a place to go to. But on the south side of 116, it would all be developed for pedestrian bikes.
And I believe the city does now own that one corner slot on the south side of 116, on the on the right hand side of West Catati as we go out towards 116 for for that realignment, correct?
Yeah, the little triangle property there. Correct. We own it. Yeah.
So the pieces are coming in place, but of course, there's all things in life perhaps slower than we want, but that's good news. All right. Well, with that, I don't see any further hands from my colleagues. So we're going to go ahead and I believe our police department project should be our our last thing to discuss.
All right. So police, one of the, one of the things that we were looking at starting up this year is is just doing a regular blood drive, public safety blood drive. So that's just a So that's just a thing we're looking at. Bowler wrap upgrade with training. So a bowler wrap is basically just another way to, you know, stop someone that's charging at you without having to use some other type of weapon. It's basically like a Batman kind of thing where it just wraps around you and stops your legs from moving. Just wraps you up in a rope, basically. Vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle, safety, rotating enforcement. So this is, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, we have the zones, the different beats, and we're looking at kind of taking some of the stuff from the LRSP in terms of, you know, pedestrian and bicycle safety issues as well as other sort of, other long, longer standing issues like the truck ordinance through downtown, as well as just getting, making sure that we're having a visible presence each one of the beats. And so, you know, scheduling times that we can be, you know, we'll have like, the, the concept here is that there's a, you know, that there's distracted driving enforcement, you know, week and there's pedestrian enforcement week and there's bicycle safety week and there's, you know, you know, trucks in the downtown enforcement week and there's, you know, zone one, zone two, zone three kind of saturation or, you know, focus weeks to really just make sure that that we're trying to address all of the vehicle safety issues that, that we heard in the LRSP, but also, you know, we just hear generally with speeding in particular. Continuing to support expansion of the safe team hours to eventually give it to 24/7 coverage. Participating in active shooter exercises with SSU and Thomas Page. That, that was in the prior list, I think, last year, but nothing happened because of COVID. Coordinate high-low evacuation drills again. So we did one last year. We're looking at doing one in the summer again this year, just to remind, remind everyone what the high-low sounds like so that they they know when we really need to use it. Just continuing training for de-escalation, implicit bias, and then dealing with people in mental health crisis. So we've been doing that for several years by just continuing that. We've been talking about an electric bicycle for patrol, the training as a possibility. A tool that we can use for crime scene and vehicle accident scene mapping, which would be a big time saver, but also would help us in our small jurisdiction group, you know, we, we get together and help each other out when there's things that none of, none of us individually can manage on our own. So this would be a really helpful tool in that effort. Noise abatement with a, with a meter. So on our schedule this fiscal year is an update to the noise, noise ordinance. But part of that is most likely going to be the need for a calibrated registered meter that we can use, that basically is accepted by court. So if someone doesn't like the fact that you gave him a noise ticket, that you have a defensible position, go to court. Handheld narcotics detector. Fentanyl, as you probably have heard on the news or maybe already know, is a big problem. There's a lot of fentanyl getting out there. And it's leading to a lot of overdoses. So just have a better way. It's, and it can be in many, many times it's indistinguishable from other things just by visual appearance. So a way to easily tell is a handheld detector for that. And then lastly, the police, you know, the police proposed projects is web basis and feedback service. A way to directly interact with police officers. If you get pulled over and, you know, and you wanna say how, how you felt the service went, you can provide direct feedback. It's just a, something we're looking at is another way to, to give people an opportunity to provide direct feedback easily on, on how the service was or issues or complaints or accolades or whatever it happens to be. And it's something that, you know, I think we would also look, look at potentially broader as well. I mean, I think it would be potentially good to, to have that in other areas of what we, what we do here at the city. And just have something that formally tracks it rather than, you know, kind of the informal variety of ways that we currently receive that information now in other departments. So that's it. I'll pause there and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, let's see, the first hand I'm seeing up is from Mr. Ford. Would you like to go ahead?
Sure.
For Sparks, I see you.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. So I'm, I was happy when I saw the list of police accomplishments for this year to see that the active shooter drills were listed as on hold and then disappointed when I got to the proposed projects for this year that it was on the list again for this year. So I'm gonna, a couple of us expressed concerns about that active shooter drill last year and never heard any response. I'm disappointed to see it still on the list with no justification. So so I've looked into it in some more depth since then. There is significant evidence out there that active shooter drills at schools do more harm than good. They increase depression significantly in schoolchildren, cause pretty extreme trauma responses in children. And, and the vast majority of shooter incidents in schools would not be affected by, by the lockdown procedures that, that active shooter drills help us to, help us to learn how to implement. So I will be pushing pretty hard to get this off the list. This is, I, I'm not gonna stand behind a budget that, that just gives blank, blank slate to the, to the police to implement, work with schools to implement active shooter drills without significant justification. Especially right now when kids, they're horribly traumatized by the last two years of being out of school and, and just not being able to be social with people now to, now to send them through drills where what they have to learn is how to be scared of, of other people. So that's gonna be a pretty strong push of mine over the next couple of meetings. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just say one, one thing real quick, Councilmember Ford on that is my, I'm certainly no expert in it by any means, but my understanding is anything with Thomas Page would never, it doesn't happen with schoolchildren there. So it's just like faculty and staff. With SSU, that's, that would be their, that would be their show. So however they design it, we would just be a participant in that case. I don't know if that helps or not, but that's.
Yes, certainly, it certainly helps. It's not what, not what people usually mean when they talk about an active shooter drill, so that's helpful. I would still wanna see some research justifying it because a lot of things in this world that are in this realm of violence that seem on the face of them like they would be good prevention efforts, actually trigger a lot of responses that we don't want to trigger. And so I'd wanna see some justification.
Thanks.
All right. And we'll turn to Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Before I say my piece, I would just concur with, with that. Even if the schoolchildren are not present, I think it can invoke a lot of trauma in the teaching staff who are part of the drill. I noticed the two people who are teachers on the council are both very skeptical of this. So anyway, what I had raised my hand initially to talk about was just to say thank you. I was looking back at the document from strategic planning last year and I remember that the, there were something like 17 FTE listed for general police, general public safety and not very much detail. And this year there's so much more detail and broken out a lot more and I just really appreciated that and it was really helpful to me to be able to see, see that breakdown. So thank you very much for that. And I was curious just for, to understand this, the, the three FTE, that's general public safety and the 4.7 that's crime prevention and suppression. I'm just wondering if can go into a little more detail about what's contained in those, since so much of those activities are broken out now. I'm sort of curious what sort of things just stayed in the, in those large numbers. Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I'll have the, you've helped me out on this a little bit, but I will say that the, the, those numbers are from essentially last calendar year, so January to December 31st. And some of the time sheet categories were evolving in the middle of that year, so it kind of picked up midstream and might have picked up some stuff from earlier in the year.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Eve, if you have anything specific to add to that while I, I'll, I'll look, I'll look it up too while we're talking.
Yeah, just with the, you know, just the criminal justice system in general, you know, crime trends and constant change and COVID, there's just a lot of variables that come into play. Public safety, I mean, some of the notes that I see are traffic citations, arrests, testifying in court, although. Yeah. But it's also, I think it's also partially the fact that the categories were kind of in flux in the year too.
That makes sense.
What was the other category?
Crime prevention and suppression activities was the biggest one on the list with 4.7 FTE.
Yeah. I think generally patrol and parking.
Yeah. Yeah, so general patrol, you know, police presence in the, police cars, parking citations, parking enforcement.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that and thank you for clarifying that. And I, I'm hoping next year if we start doing more of these targeted enforcements on a, on a schedule, that maybe we can see a breakdown of how, you know, how much time was spent on, not to get too in the weeds, but just to, to be able to give you kudos for all the enforcements that you're doing and be able to see, see exactly what kinds of enforcements are going on would be really helpful.
And since I'm unmuted, as far as the active shooter training goes, I, I did have some comments. So unfortunately, in the United States, these active shooters, they happen and they're not going away. And so a police department has to be prepared to respond to an active shooter. These are people's kids at Thomas Page kindergarten through eighth grade. Having said that, I'm more than happy to work closely with the principal for best practices, not to traumatize people. If that makes council feel better. I think that's one way to maybe get this done is work directly with the principal on best practices, not to traumatize students.
Or staff.
And staff too.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go now to Councilmember Harvey.
That's fine. While I hear Ben and Laura's concerns, I am concerned that this continues, as Police Chief said. And so maybe one of the things that we may consider, since schools is really not our purview, schools is really with the school district, my suggestion would be for us to bring this up in our two-by-two-by-two meeting with the schools and have a discussion around that with that whole group to see what their thoughts from a district perspective is. Because our, as the chief pointed out, ours is really a supportive role, but it seems to me where there has been success, people knew what to do and where there has been failure, people didn't know what to do. So I would hate to not provide the staff at the schools what they need in order to protect the children and protect until law enforcement can get there and help. So it, it's really how do we do this together to make sure that everybody has the tools that they need to do this? Because I, I don't think we know which school it's gonna happen at and when it's gonna happen and all that. So I just, however we get the tools there, I think it's important for us to have that discussion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Ask one more time, any comments? I'll briefly say, I hear my colleagues concerned. You make some valid points. I do hear those concerns and I think they're real ones. I do think you make a good point that I would like to hear when this comes back to us. A very full description of what other concerns might be on the other side of not doing this, the justification essentially that you asked for. And so I do think we need to assess that. I, I mean, the first thought that came to me was heaven forbid if something like this did happen and we of course responded as we would have to. And if things didn't go well from a command and control point of view for some reason, if it went horribly wrong and perhaps had we done better, it might have had a better outcome. And we had not drilled, had not done this drill after we'd been asked and told that it's a valuable thing to do in this world that we live in. Unfortunately, I would be concerned facing the public. So I kind of wanna hear both sides of this. So I think it's a very good thing to actually ask staff to really prepare something more in depth that shows both sides of the coins to lead us in a good direction. And I do like the idea of hearing from the two-by-two, but I, at least my point of view at this point is that ultimately this one comes down to us, we're responsible for police response in this region here. So we'll have to make that determination. But at any rate, I think it'll be a good discussion and will probably be some value for all of us. And so we'll see where that goes. So with that, I'll ask one more time, since we talked a lot about that, anything else from the council, or I go out to public comment? Not seeing it at the moment. So I will then ask if we can go one more time to public comments tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Looking to our attendees, please use your raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
Very good. All right. Well, I will bring that back. Mr. Obit, did you have anything to add to wrap up our study session tonight?
Yeah, just a couple more quick things. So that's a lot of tech, I apologize.
Didn't look good from here.
All right. So one of the things that we wanted just to have a conversation about with the council is the possibility of, of doing a two-year budget. And when, and really what that means is it's, is it's two one-year budgets. And how that would normally work is there would be like quarterly financial updates. But they're two separate, basically the two years adopted at the same time. And then at the end of the year, there's an update and adjustments, or adjustments can happen throughout the year as needed if that happens to, like, like in this year, we talked earlier about safe, the safe program. That was just a mid-year kind of, or not, wasn't even a mid-year, it was just sort of an adjustment that happened on the fly and that of course can still happen in this case too. This, this would be, we're also starting to work on a five-year forecast, a rolling five-year forecast. So that would be rolling each year as we start, you know, so that we would have a budget and also a five-year forecast that would be a companion just to kind of look out at our best estimates of what the future looks like. With that, with the idea to really start hopefully encouraging some of the, you know, multi-year planning to achieve the goals and, and have just more stability and focus on the goals. And the benefit of, you know, the benefit of something like this would be that it would be just a more efficient use of time to develop and publish a single two-year budget. So it'd be submitted all at once, like for award, like we do now, but rather than every year, it'd be just every other year kind of thing. But, you know, doing something like this, you, you know, you would have to make sure that you, that you clearly define your strategic goals and, you know, and the projects that you want to implement to achieve those goals. And, and this isn't unique to a two-year budget, but any budget or any, you know, any planning program is always subject to possible mission, we call it, so-called mission creep. So making sure that, you know, the goals are clear and that. So making sure that, you know, the goals are clear and that that's where the energy is focused, so that all, all the numerous little things that come up throughout the year, don't, you know, don't distract from the primary mission and divert resources from achieving the goals. So that's, that's one thing. I just wanted to throw the concept out there and just check everyone's temperature, see if anyone has any questions about a concept like this, likes it, doesn't like it. The other bullet there, I'll just say is, we are, and I think this came up earlier in the conversation, we are evaluating some of our contract costs as well as ongoing service needs. And we'll be having, you know, probably more conversation in the general fund, but budget study session about that, once we've had a chance to more fully look at the sort of the revenues and expenses that we'll be looking at. So.
Right. Let me just ask the council, go around quickly, if we can just give the city manager some quick initial feedback to the concept. We'll start with Mr. Ford, because I do see his hand. But everybody could just quickly weigh in if they're open to discussing potentially two-year budget middle of the road, or, or if you don't like the idea, this would be good for us to hear right now. So go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Definitely open to it. I like some of the points in favor. I do think it would mean that this process every two years would take longer than it currently does, because it's more of a commitment to longer-term goals and projects. And so, for instance, you know, a discussion, we'd have to have more serious discussion about seriously addressing some of the, the council goals and objectives, rather than just look at what we have to do to keep the place running and then identify which goals they go with. And so I think there would be, you know, every two years, the process would be longer than our current every year process, but I, but it feels to me like it would lead to a more strategic budgeting. And therefore, more strategic approach by the city. So I'm definitely open to it.
All right. Councilmember Sparks, I believe I saw your hand flash for a minute.
Yeah. I, I am open to it as well. I do think it has, I'd like to learn more about how exactly we would, we would do our strategic planning in conjunction with this change, because I just do think it could make us a little less agile. Often, you know, often if something comes up that's a priority, the question is, well, what are we going to kick off the list in order to make time to do this? And if we're planning two years ahead, then it makes, it likely we're going to have those more difficult decisions more frequently. So if we can have kind of a very rough draft of the second year budget with an opportunity to still do goal setting each year, I, I think I would be on board with that. I'm, I'm open to learning more.
All right. Anybody else want to give any feedback at this point in time? Not seeing that. I'll say, General, I'm certainly in open this. I do agree, it sounds logical. I agree, there is the potential, because it is somewhat longer, and we would nail down some things better, potentially makes us a little less agile. But on the other hand, I think it probably also means we are more able to accomplish bigger, more complex goals more quickly, hopefully. And I still think most importantly, as we always have to in this process, we build some flex time into it as we do now. And certainly would have to be a much longer process. So I think the council would like to hear some thoughts, how process, the run-up to it might work for us, too, because I, I think for it to be successful, the process will have to be good. And now I see hands from Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Harvey in that order.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I think that's a great idea, and I think you should implement it in 2023.
Well put. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, I'm open to the idea, and I agree with you, Mayor. I think that one of the things that we'll have to be cognizant of is the ability to have a little bit of contingency, if you will, so that we don't have to have someone wait two years to get something in on the goals that we have, a little bit of flexibility to work things in that come up. But yeah, I'm, I'm open to this.
Yeah, I, I think I've heard that from everybody on the council, Mr. Obed. And, and I would fully expect, actually, council, as we look at this, this year and historically, you will notice, looking at the planned goals and objectives that we have versus the ones we're added during the year, we always keep some significant space, because we know this is the way this particular business operates and has to operate. So I imagine that still has to happen, and I believe that space for both years will have to be roughly equivalent still, assuming it continues to function as it generally has for us fairly adequately so far. But certainly, those will be things for you to bring back to us, Mr. Obed. Any, any feedback or any final comments on that, City Manager?
Yeah, I, I would say that, that's definitely, that's definitely something that would have, that would have to be built in the process and other places where this happens. You know, the, the year-end adjustments. And that typically in that process, there's, there's something built into that to allow a conversation around, you know, are we still on track? With, you know, we all talked a year ago, is this still the way we want to go? So it's not a full-blown, you know, like we don't go through general fund, enterprise fund, study sessions. But there would still be a sort of a shorter kind of check-in and adjustment period, for sure. That's definitely how it works in other places.
That may well help with the agility problem. I like that. All right. I'll ask one more time if the council has anything else they want to ask. And if I don't see any hands, since we did spend a little time talking about this, I will go, whoops, Councilmember Sparks, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a question, Mr. Mayor, for you. I did have two items that I wanted to discuss, and I wasn't sure which department they fell under, so I hadn't brought them up yet. So I'm wondering if there's any more opportunity within this meeting to bring those up.
No, I'm sorry, you have to wait till next year, actually, probably the year after that, that is a penalty, I suspect. Let me ask this. I was going to go to public comment, but let's hear what you want to bring forward first, because that way, if somebody wants to speak in it, we can include that, too. So why don't you share what you wanted to ask about with us?
Sure. So there were two things on my list that I have committed to bring up and try to work on. And one of them is digital connection equity. In other words, I, I'm thinking of it as cellphone and broadband coverage within our neighborhood, within our neighborhoods and within the city. I've had a lot of complaints from folks about very poor cell signals throughout different parts of the city, and lots of folks have brought it up to me as a safety issue, that they're worried during a disaster or during wildfire season, that they're not going to be able to get in touch with people. And I just don't feel as a, as a policymaker that I know enough about the situation in Khatari to, to be effective on this issue. So I would love to see for us to do some sort of study on broadband coverage and cellphone reception coverage within Khatari, just to get a baseline understanding of, you know, where are the inequities, where are the neighborhoods that are being underserved? Where are the places that we have massive gaps in cell coverage? Do we have the capacity during an emergency for, to handle all the, the communication that needs to happen? So that was one, one item. And the other item I have is, I'm very concerned about in the event that we had a wildfire come through Khatari, would our roads be able to handle evacuation in a timely manner? My worst-case scenario that I worry about is something like what happened in Paradise, where the roads are jammed up by people evacuating from other cities around us as well, and folks can't get out of some of the areas of Khatari that just, maybe there's only one way in or out. So I would love to see us do a study, and I think it would have to be in conjunction with Riner Park, probably, of what do the tra, what is the traffic patterns, what do the traffic patterns look like in case of a massive evacuation that all happens at once? So those, those are my two items. Again, one, the cell and broadband coverage study, and two, a wildfire evacuation study that I'd like to see.
Well, I, I certainly hear what you're saying, particularly on number one, I'm sitting here running this meeting on an iPad with essentially the data package on that, because there's no, absolutely no dependable broadband here. We depend on DHL, and, and that goes away in the evening. So it's, it's kind of rough. However, I would suggest for both these, I think that probably city manager items that you could, that if we were having a budgetary discussion, we would bring them up then and ask where they might fit at the beginning of the meeting for future reference. I think they could both actually sound to me, and I'll ask you the city manager occurrence, like they essentially would be separate items to actually come before the council. So I might suggest just bringing them that way to the city manager, as we do now, to see first what his assessment of time impact is and going with that direction with it, if that sounds appropriate. But I'll toss it over to the city manager and get his feedback on his assessment.
Well, both, both of those projects would be in, I mean, they would be probably led out of this department, City Manager's Department. And they would, I mean, they would be projects, they would take some time, for sure. And it would be, you know, something that, is that if I understood you correctly, Councilmember Sparks, that would be something that you would want to have considered in the list of projects for next fiscal year?
Yes, and yeah, I, I believe I brought this up with you at our meeting last week, too, that I, and I apologize, I didn't know which department, I should have brought them up at the beginning, sorry.
But I think that's just fine. Yeah, it certainly, so yeah, we'll, we'll see how that fits in terms of timeline. I'll let you work that through, and then we'll see if it, if it's time sensitive or not. I do know, one thing I should add to the assessment, there is some money for broadband coming about. If it's the type of money that will actually fit for a community like ours, and there might be significant time to actually try and figure that out. That's why I suggest these, rather than be budgetary issues, these sound like they'd be researched just to see what is the nature of the problem, how can we deal with it? But either way, they're certainly serious topics. So we'll see what, where we go, the next steps we might have for that. If that sounds acceptable to everybody, I'm seeing some, some nodding heads. Councilmember Ford, your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to jump in the conversation on those two. With that new process we talked about for adding new items, this, this actually, this meeting is the place to introduce new items. This is the beginning of the budget cycle for the year. So, so I don't think the response of, you know, talk about it with the city manager outside this meeting, because Councilmember Sparks already did that, is, so I'm at, yes, maybe when we were having a discussion of the city manager's department would have been the right place to bring it up, but, but we're still in the same meeting and still on the same agenda items. So it feels to me like this is the right place to talk about it.
Oh, I, I have no disagreement. I don't think it matters where it comes up. I was just simply suggesting for the future, if you're unsure about anything in city government, it probably falls under the city manager's responsibility. You're always safe to assess that. And I, I do think, though, that this is a place to bring up new things. But if we're talking about, if we actually knew the constraints of where we're at with Wi-Fi, and we knew what action we want to take, and had a rough idea of what, you know, costs were made, in other words, we wanted to put in the budget, I think this would be a place and time to do it. But just hearing the city manager's initial estimate of those things sounded to me, as I guessed, larger, large things that would take a little time to discuss, that would be my assumption, that they'd have to look at that, and we'd have to decide then either are we, can we wait long enough that it might take to fit this in? Or is it, or is it time, is there a priority where it needs to go ahead anyhow? So I'm open to those discussions, and I'm certainly not trying to shut it down. So I hope you did, I didn't misrepresent that. My apologies if I did.
No, thanks. Thanks for that. Yeah, I guess I would, I would ask Damian if it, if it would be possible to see that, the, the first thing that would need to happen, as you said, Mayor Landman, is, is figuring out what our current status of broadband coverage is, for instance, for that project. And, and that was the, was the, the first step that Councilmember Sparks was proposing be added to next year's budget. And that estimate of how much person power that would take in next year's budget is something that I think city manager could, could produce by our next strategic planning meeting. At which point, then we would have the data to think about, you know, the city manager's department does actually have some room between currently allocated projects and, and allocated FTE. So if, if the city manager was able to come back next time with a rough guess, you know, that sounds like a point one person power for the year.
I hear what you're saying. Let me ask Councilmember Sparks, so are you asking for just simple research into what is, what is the lay of the land here in terms of broadbandous community? Or is perhaps I misunderstood you, are you looking for that? And then, and what do we do about it? How can we do something, and how can we improve it? If you're just looking for that first step of an assessment of what we have, that's perhaps something different. So, so what was it you were looking for?
What I was specifically asking for was a, was a study to take that first step to find out what the lay of the land is, where the gaps are, where there are inequities. So looking at what is the broadband coverage, what is the cellphone coverage? I had thought that it was a little premature to bring something very unspecific about improving broadband to this meeting. So I, I do believe, I think we're in agreement that the first step is to understand our situation right now, and that's what I was requesting. I hope that's.
So we've got something new here. So I guess, I don't, the idea was not to put the city manager on the spot to make a a quick call right off the cuff on whether you can do this in a timeline or not. But I'll ask your initial thoughts on that, and then if you could get back to all of us, and obviously, if possible, it would be wonderful to be able to hear this at our next meeting. But I'll listen to what you have to say tonight, certainly, or if you need some time to look at it, I would understand that, too, myself.
Um, I, no, Mayor, I mean, I think, I think, you know, by the time we get to the general fund budget study session, which is in April, I think I can at least assess the level of effort and what kind of general costs might be involved, so that we can have a conversation around that.
Good. Good. Well, thank you for that. And I'm going to thank my colleagues for clarifying, because perhaps I understood the scope of what you were asking for. I, I thought you were, especially with the lead in pointing out the problems that we do have for people in terms of, and the inequity of it, that I thought you were looking for more than just another study, but actual action. So, but you're right, we have to start there. I see your hand up, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, I guess I would like a little bit of a clarification on the second item. I, I get the first item. Because they've already produced evacuation plans for each of the areas. So I'm a little confused about what it is that's being asked, since we already have evacuation routes that everyone was given for each of the areas. So I just need a little help understanding what's being asked.
Is it okay for me to respond, Mr. Mayor?
I, I think, we'll let you jump in right now, Councilmember Sparks, and then I'll ask the city manager to weigh in with anything to help answer both your points. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. I was, what I would like to see is somebody to come in and do not a plan, but a, a study, a simulation of, you know, like a stress test, like if we were, if there were to be a massive evacuation all at once out of Khatari, how long would it take for cars to get out? And would it be fast enough to evacuate in time for a fire coming through our city? Because I had seen some, I had seen some very troubling reports from a group that went through and evaluated city on a county, sorry, on a city-by-city basis. The state, the, the, the safety ratings that we have, basically, like they, they graded each city on their ability to evacuate and how likely a Paradise-like scenario would be. And we, we were, we got a pretty bad grade on that. So that raised my alarms for me, that I think we, as a council, need to go above and beyond the evacuation plans that exist to, to really ensure that we know for sure that our roads can handle everyone leaving all at once safely.
So you're saying someone already did this study, and from that study, we failed. And now you want another, where, where?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I didn't have a, a very, I should have prepared more of a presentation for this. The, there was a, it wasn't an in-depth study, it was a report that was done. I've, I don't have the name of it in front of me, but I'd be happy to send it to you after the meeting that graded like every city in the country, basically, on in, they used indicators, but they didn't do an actual simulation of what would happen with our particular streets. They just used publicly available data to come up with a general score for how, how well we'd be able to handle a Paradise-like scenario. And, and our score, based on the algorithm that they used, was, was pretty poor. Um, so that got me concerned that, okay, I think we should take a closer look at this and, and really see. Because I don't know the quality of their algorithm, how, how well it can really capture a specific situation in Katari, but it, it was enough to raise a.
Right, yeah, because, you know, Paris was unique in that there's one road, and that's it. So we at least have some options. So uh, it would be interesting to find out what their algorithm was, because you know, we do have multiple ways out here. Um, might they get clogged because of our sister city? Yeah, they might get clogged. Um, but um, we do have at least more than one road, which was not the case in Paradise. Um, and, and some of the other areas, even when they had the problems um with the dam up in Orville, there's one road. Um, so um, I, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing a little bit more data on that, but now I understand where they're coming from. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I uh I would be inter I certainly see the concern, and this goes back to our earlier discussion, elevating climate change concern to a higher degree in our planning, because here we go, here's something that essentially really to a degree relates to that, I believe. I, I think we'd have some agreement on that. My curious, I would be curious in terms of the value of spending a lot of time and horsepower, if you will, staff horsepower in doing this right now, simply because it seems evident to me if everybody leaves at once, we're going to do better than Paradise, but it's going to be terrible, and there'll be traffic backups. And just about every human community, that is the case. Uh, and I ask that not to be negative, but simply because we can expect that, doing some more time and money to look into, we might have some finer detail on it, but the bottom line is, the only answer is there is, you know, other than incredibly massive infrastructure changes, which I just don't think we'll have, I think it would only speak to then more long-term warning, uh, earlier preparation and evacuation, staged evacuation and plans like that, which I believe the county has, but perhaps it's the type of thing we could have a presentation, just update us where, what the county has, and how our post, our evacuation process would actually work. Maybe that would be beneficial too. Uh, because I mean, that was the discussion in the Lyman family house. So we weren't terribly concerned this was going to come over to Hill Katari a few years ago, but we discussed if this did, which direction do we go? There was no real official guidance, because it was happening quickly, and nobody had thought about this sort of thing ever before in this region. And our recognition was wherever we go, everybody else will be there too. Um, and I fully expect that to be the case. City Manager Obed, do you have anything to help clarify?
Yeah.
Um, my best direction to respond?
Yeah, I, I, I think that um that, you know, coming back and having a conversation about evacuation plans would probably be the most helpful. I mean, when, when there's a sudden evacuation, it's going to be a complete cluster. I mean, no matter, you know, what kind of what kind of planning you do, it's, it's really, um, I mean, in terms of roadway planning, it's, it's really, um, it's primarily about really warning and getting people out in a more metered fashion, rather than letting them all leave at one time. Um, I know, like in my own, you know, at my own house, when they had a fire evacuation, it was everyone all at once, and it was a complete disaster, you know? Um, and there's lots of ways, there's lots of roads, but if everyone's on every one of them all at the same time. So it's more about, it's, it's like trying to, you, you can't really design a system for peak all at once. You have to, you know, because, because you'd have like six-lane roads every direction to try to accommodate the peak, you know? So it's really about, it, it's really about making sure that you have good advanced warning systems, and you try to get people out um in a staged fashion, in a coordinated fashion. So that might be, um, that might be a helpful, it's a helpful place to start, at least, start the conversation.
I'd suggest also, perhaps, as we continue to review that our land use code, again, all these things come together as we look at how we do house and all these other things. We also have to look at more enhanced fire safety than perhaps we have in the past. Um, because it's evident that something we assumed would never come here may well. I, I would have never expected that fire to jump the freeway up by Windsor, never in a million years, and yet, by gosh, it did. So we're certainly in a new place. Councilmember Harvey, I see your hands still up. Did you have something more?
Yeah, I just was gonna ask Damian, I know that we, along with Renner Park, and also with the county, with the emergency preparedness, they do different scenarios. Is this not a, a scenario that they would do a tabletop exercise on, you know, based upon different um scenarios, how, how the evacuation plans would go?
Yeah, well, so that's, I mean, it's, it's something that we're trying to definitely get better at. And um, the last time we had fires, the, the evacuation maps and zones weren't even widely known to the public, you know, until the disaster was underway.
Right.
And um, and so, you know, we've, you know, we've um, we've been publicizing our evacuation maps. We did the evacuation, first evacuation drill in coordination with SSU and Renner Park last year. But we're going to do another one, we proposed to do another one in the summer. Um, but it's, it's continual education as far as the public goes, and and then coordinate with our neighboring jurisdictions to make sure that we do, we do our best to try to phase, phase it, so that it's not, okay, everyone go now. Because then it's a mess.
Well, and all it takes is one person gumming it up and going the wrong way, and then that messes everyone up.
Yeah, and it really becomes a county-level issue too, because we can do the best thing we can here. But if everybody in Renner Park isn't staged and working in the same way, then they all go at once. Well, our roads are hosed, so. It does become a complex issue, certainly.
Yeah, we need to go in an orderly, orderly fashion with enough resources kind of directing people too, and that seems to always be a problem, because people are just kind of left on their own, and there's no one, you know, keeping the flow going.
All right. Well, good. Well, thank you for that. And again, thank you for clarifying the direction of that, everybody. That was helpful for me. Apologies if I misread uh some of the original intentions and that. So hopefully we covered that. Anything else I'll ask one more time, um, before we conclude our evening, I believe, from the council? No? Mr. Obed, anything left to add?
No, I think we covered them all. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everybody, for an engaging and helpful discussion. I look forward to when this comes back. We are adjourned at eight eighteen. Good evening.
Thank you. Great. Have a good night.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.